Good evening, everybody. This is the one meeting of the year with superintendent opens the meeting and calls it to order because we reorganized. The reorganization of the school committee roles. I'd like to call the Monday, August 22nd, 2022, meeting to order. It is 7:14. Typically, what we've done in on this committee is there's been a cycle, you know, one year change of a chair or two year change, two year cycle for a change in the chair. So I know that Jess is finishing up for a second year. So I would entertain a motion. Or entertain a nomination for chair for Medfield School.
Traditionally, we have rotated through the vice chair. Leo, what do you think?
I knew this was coming, so I'm gonna have to respectfully decline that nomination. And it is not that I don't feel that the it's not a worthy role of my presence, but my time both at home and professionally is definitely pressed, not that anybody else, this is not. I had done a lot of thinking about it, and if the committee is, we can I could pass on this time, this particular opportunity on this one, this this round, that would be wonderful. I appreciate that, Anna Mae. And I know that's somewhat traditional, but.
It's not etched in stone.
Yeah.
Do you have the nomination?
Anna Mae.
Do we have a nomination for Anna Mae?
How would you?
I don't know. So his discussion.
I have a second, so is there discussion? Anna Mae, would you be able to take it on? Do you feel like, even if it were like a one year cycle or two year cycle, do you feel like that's a thing?
Um, yes, I I held the role before, so I think there would be a shortening curve. So, um, yes.
And then your vice chair is in terms of, you know, kind of the right code, kind of passing that on.
So I said.
Any other nominations for chair? Okay, so we have a nomination and a second for Anna Mae for chair.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
And just to mention, Michelle is, I'm going to move my chair seat. It's been a good one. No, I want to move down there anyway. But Michelle is not able to be here tonight, but says that she is happy to accept any role that the committee would be willing to nominate her for for next year. So just as we're moving along here.
So as we're in the spirit of moving along, um, do do I call for nominations?
No, you have a nomination for vice chair.
Right, it all has to come back to me.
How soon you forget, very quickly, actually. Do we have a nomination for vice chair? I nominate Tim. Okay, well, you could nominate Tim too, or you could second, and I could second, whatever.
Do we have a, so Jess Riley?
Seconds. And then that same thing, I actually, I get into business, the vice chair role has been humbly and whatnot. Not that I tend to take a any step back, but those roles are definitely education side of things. So continue to do my, of course. I think Tim would be great.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great. So chair, vice chair, recording secretary, do we have the nomination for the recording secretary, please?
I don't think Michelle Kirby.
I think my understanding, my exposure is that she would prefer to stay as financial secretary, as we've done previously. We're kind of give people a year to kind of.
Oh, right, she just got that.
Yeah, so, you know, she really actually enjoys that part of the job, and I know she kind of identified some choice to want to be on the budget supplement as well.
You learn a lot about this.
Yeah.
It was, I thought she's been only on finance secretary for a few months.
Yeah.
So I think you're asking for a nomination for recording secretary.
Correct.
If I'm given that, I'll nominate Jess Riley.
I'll take that on. There's some things that I'd like to keep on doing in terms of a lot of the written work I've been doing for the last year anyway. So if I have more time to do that, that certainly makes things nicer. Yeah.
So Leo, if we need a nomination for Jess, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, thank you, Jess. Now for financial secretary, do we have a motion?
I motion, Michelle Kirby.
Second.
Second, Leo, all in favor?
Hi.
That's it for right now. There's plenty of other things that we'll find throughout the year, but. I wish I got a talking stick or something I could hand off to you, but I don't. So good luck.
Right, so we were just in executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, medical health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session, provided, however, that notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties to complain against the school committee and superintendent, superintendent and director of student services. Open meeting law complaint on March 9th, 2022 by Robert Els. So with that.
We discussed two other things. Uh, there was a complaint, uh, it was in three, it was specific to three different issues, so. I'm sorry, did I space out? Oh, I spaced out. My apologies.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you though. Reminders, okay, thank you.
No, no, it's me. I'm just gonna sit down here.
So this moment will take any public input? None, none right now. And, um, the approval of the minutes, we have the regular meeting of June 16th, 2022, and June 24th, 2022. Everyone should get a chance to read the minutes, and do we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
So moved Jess, a second, second tonight, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you. New business, staffing updates.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So when your materials, you have our typical staffing update that we do at this time every year. However, we changed it around a little bit by breaking up between unit A, unit B, so you get a good sense of, you know, what the replacements and the changes are in each of those units. As you can see, lots of COAs, change assignments that are in there, you know, with folks retiring and other folks that work here taking those positions. And you, if you've seen anything in the news in the past, you know, three or four months, you've seen how difficult it has been in the education sector in terms of people leaving the profession and then trying to hire folks. And, you know, I think Boston at one point had 1,500 openings and teachers. I mean, it's just really been a challenge. But we've been fortunate here. I think there's a few to be announced, and they are unit B, but they're in the process right now. So we're just in the process of interviewing and making recommendations. I think one of the hardest positions that any district has to fill is physics at high school level. And we we filled that with the candidate today, we hired him, so we're excited about that. But, you know, any questions on that? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Now, I'm actually, I've been checking our our school spring site, you have to see what's been open, because I know, you know, speaking with colleagues and friends, like Medway still has 30 positions open, so it's tough all around.
We've been fortunate. I think a lot of districts around here have had teachers go to different districts too and resign over the summer, and some of them very unexpected, and we haven't had that issue. So it's been, it's been a really good year, and the folks we've hired are great. We have a new teacher orientation coming up Wednesday and Thursday this week, which is two full days of induction and getting folks activated into the district. So we're looking forward to that. It's always a lot of good energy in those two days with the folks, so.
So all the open positions have applicants and.
Right. In process.
Yeah, very few, but yeah.
All right, student handbook approvals.
So when your materials, you have the links for the handbook, the elementary, and then the middle, and then the high school, as required by your policy, you approve those before they go out to the public and the parents first day. We typically try to get it done before that first day. Sometimes years past, we haven't, but we are this year, so that's good. Any questions on those? I don't have all of them for me, but I could pull them off my computer, if I need to.
Um, I do have one amendment to both the high school and the the middle school handbook in that we, I think, and I know that this is just a kind of an oversight more than anything.
Yeah, we did talk about it earlier in the year.
Yeah, yeah, not so much, uh, at this point, we still have a student attire policy, which is not, you know, bad in itself, but I think that currently at Reed, Medfield High School, and it's also Blake Middle School, seeks to maintain a respectful learning environment for all members of the school community. Great. Student attire should reflect these values and refrain from inappropriate content and styles. The following is a sample of types of items prohibited at school and school-related events. And the first two, I have absolutely nothing, um, no issue with. First is clothing that depicts images or contains any references to drug and or alcohol use. Second one is clothing with other inappropriate language or images. The third one is excessively revealing clothing, and there is such a history of essentially having these excessively revealing clothing kind of rules, so very specifically focused on the idea that young men somehow are not able to control themselves in the presence of a young woman who may be wearing a tank top or a bare midriff or any of these things. And so there's a very specific historical gendered part to this, that I think that, um, literally simply listing the first two, clothing that depicts images or contains references to drug and or alcohol, clothing with other inappropriate language or images, takes care of some of the examples, but does not necessarily need to outline what would be specific to essentially young women. And the fact of the matter is, styles change over time. There, we ask our track teams, male and female, to wear tank tops. I am wearing a tank top right now. I am not distracted from learning. Bare midriffs have been the season. There's, you know, there's crop tops. When do we decide that a bare midriff is okay for a young woman, but not for a young man? Is there a gendered part to this? Is there a part? I think that we don't necessarily need to be outlining that, but instead teaching our kids what's most appropriate in the learning environment, instead of outlining things that are historically placed on young women for responsibility to manage their dress as opposed to young men. Now, it's a pretty standard, I think, most dress codes. Does anyone have an issue with that? Could we realistically cut out simply the fact that excessively revealing clothing is one of those things that has historically been targeted for young women?
I can agree with that. My experience in the front office, the past, sure. Can't be called excessively.
Problem in terms of like, does Brenda, is Brenda Hager, does she deal, deals a lot with?
I wouldn't say a lot. I think it comes up on occasion when the weather is warmer, you know. I don't think there's any issue with taking those out, or we don't, I mean, I think it's it's easier to do now because certainly if this were 15 years ago, they're all in the printer, and we had to do it that way, that'd be a difficult, that'd be an issue. But, you know, I think that something that Jess and I have talked about, I think, before this, I think we talked about that.
I think.
It's very subjective.
It's extremely subjective.
Fairly subjective, right? And I think we're just setting up, I think the language just sets people up for different debate, right? So it could be, it's all dated, right?
It's a tricky one, because if it just says excessively revealing clothing without any examples, at least it does say, you know, hey, that's, we don't want to have excessively revealing, but once you start putting examples in, I kind of, you know, I don't feel strongly one way or the other at all. It also, it's an interesting one if you didn't have the examples. People have a sense of, it is subjective, but there is a certain line across.
It is certainly rare that young women, I'm sorry, young men are brought into the front office over time for excessively revealing clothing. I don't think that I can think of, you can think of situation unless it's the, you know, the top of your underwear is showing. But I just think it's dated, and I think it's something that, you know, we can move beyond. It doesn't seem like it's a lot of time to.
But I think this is something at home, parents should be having conversations what their own family values are and how you should be, you know, present yourself in the world.
I mean, and it doesn't say that these are the only two ways that we would accept something as not appropriate for school. This is worthy of a discussion. These are two examples. The first two are two examples. The third one simply removes the automatic assumption that any one of these would be so automatically inappropriate in one way or another. And quite frankly, it says that across all school, um, all school events. So then I think about what I've seen with semi-formals, with young men who are wearing different, you know, kind of loud, crazy clothing, and, you know, wearing prom dresses that the styles change. Do we, do we start pulling people off and shaming them for what they're wearing to those events while they are still? So that's certainly my take on it.
I almost have to say, one of the things that's bothered me, if you look at the volleyball teams, I don't quite understand, short skirts that are excessively short or tight. It doesn't make sense to me. It's not on the agenda, but it just, to me, you could go right off the bat. That might be a reason to make a change.
And we're not changing.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
Or simply removing the whole point.
No, I know. I just, I can't, once the conversation comes up, I see where there's a lot of angst.
Or then we end up putting ourselves in a position in which we simply aren't enforcing it because we realize it's not enforceable, but not necessary to enforce in the context. And then we're essentially taking away the power of what is important about a household, which is boundaries and understanding for everybody.
So do we have any other?
So I might have a little formatting issue over at the middle school, but we have to pass that on to Michelle.
Do we, do we have a motion to approve the handbooks with the amendment as Jess Riley has suggested?
Motion, so moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Yeah, before, I want to just clarify that's removing bullet, item number three and all bullets, just for everybody who's interested.
Yeah, I second. That's from the middle and high school.
Is it at the elementary school? I didn't, I wasn't able to, I didn't see it either, and I didn't make what, I just wanted to make sure. We ought to leave it.
Another question I was just gonna have, I was looking at a lot of, probably a larger subject, this is around these electronic devices and cell phones. Has that been an issue for us? Is that a? I'm trying to choose my words carefully. How was the one today? Oh, there's a, there's a few that I, I think I pulled some to you, Jeff, I don't know if I did. Someone doing with little pockets that go in.
There's been some informal kinds.
Yeah. Is there something policy-wise that would, you know? I understand the the convenience factor, being a parent, not supplying clothes for children, but but with maybe alternative devices that would allow them the ability to reach out over the comfort. I understand that piece. It's something, and this could be a subject for another time, sure. I'm not sure if it's a handbook, I don't, because even what's written in the handbook, the actual execution is difficult. You know, on a scale of a 10, would you rate it as a nine as a problem, or is it a six as a problem, the, you know, teachers or?
Depends on what level it is, you know, like we had, this past school year, there was some kind of gizmo that the young kids were getting where they could communicate with a watch. It wasn't Apple Watch, it was some sort of.
It was a gizmo, it was a bumperizer, man.
Yeah, so that they could do that.
I went with the Apple Watch instead.
Yeah, so, you know, that was, that was kind of an issue a little bit at, we lost school for second, third graders. Yeah, I think perennial, the issue with cell phones at middle and high school every day, you know, every day. And it's, it's, you know, we try to think about it as, we have to also teach kids how to use it responsibly too. You know, that's part of what we have to do.
Totally get it.
The usual citizenship piece of how to appropriately use the technology you have. Yeah, it's a challenge. I mean, I think if you, you have all that power in your pocket, in your hand all the time, you know, let some teacher utilize it, they can, at the high school level, use it in their instruction and have kids actively use it in a positive way. But I do think it's not just a Medfield thing, it's a problem everywhere.
Well, that was, I was part of the SCL committee, and I, we studied that virtual year. Tough one. And I, when I saw was, I did appreciate and understand that they are gonna have to learn to manage that after. And I think that was something that was clear in the high school that I watched as my child went from middle school to high school, and nobody was complaining at middle school that it was in their locker. And then they're all of a sudden available. And I, I just part of, you know, I was just saying, I had a kid said, putting more controls in place is a better thing. You could see there was some different hints, you know, it's more like if each teacher was consistent, right? One, because once one, it goes out, like, don't use them in class.
Well, that's what I picked up on, on the, you know, the teacher detention, use electronic devices, you know, we hand out certificates to them. I, you know, and I think the, you know, one of the, I've done a lot of thinking on this, you know, because it's one of the things in my profession that I come, that I run into around the use of the actual, the actual Chromebook devices or the laptop devices, they can still communicate, you know, on those devices with their friends. Obviously, they cannot texting unless they've got a certain kind of device. However, I think that it's healthy to, you know, to train the idea of putting it away during this particular time. I just didn't know, it's a tough one, right? It's a pedagogical classroom management slash support for administration type, very complex, has to be extremely strong and supported in the culture. Obviously, it's outside of our purview as far as day-to-day operations. I just only ask, is there a policy perspective that, you know, is this the time, or is it a separate conversation? Say, you know, we need to have something separate around that to update this globally, how are we gonna address it, you know, as a school culture item?
I think it's a long conversation. I think it's much bigger because we need to look at it from each grade level. Yeah, I would say that since we switched the middle school over to Chromebooks and took away iPads, it's gotten much better. That was one of the complaints that, that I received with iPads from teachers and parents alike, is that it's kind of a Wild, Wild West on iPads because they could do the texting, which they can't do as much with, you know, with the Chromebook. So that's been a positive change. So really, we only have iPads in the middle school, high school level, where they use them for science and cards. And then if we want everyone else, it's Chromebook, so it's been a positive change in that regard. I guess that had a logical shift about my son's iPad last year.
But maybe that is a thing at SCL that gets revisited, so it deserves a little dive.
I think so.
It's one of those things that literally reinvented every few years as well as technology meets, and I think that's, you know, becomes again an operational issue around how we kind of, how that develops and chooses with his staff to kind of get the pace, because that may work. The policy or, you know, procedure, like.
That was the takeaway I had. We weren't ready to make a strong recommendation that says consistency amongst all the teachers. It says, when it's away, it's away. That was the one thing that I think we noticed, because some teachers never had a problem, right? And if you could get all of them to at least say, it's in your bag, and if you take it out, you would be asked to step out. Right. I think everybody can appreciate that. It's like when you're having dinner with a 17-year-old here the whole time. You don't do that.
Right.
Right? So I think it is an interesting one in that there's pros and cons. You also need to be able to manage customers' time without it. So I, that would just be without, I mean, I would support whether it's a future gen item or an SCL topic.
Yeah, because I think pre-pandemic, that's when we discussed the policy, you know, that the phones was free before the pandemic. And I think now it's a whole other ballgame, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it's something that, you know, gives the parents feedback, the teachers feedback, students feedback. I think that's, that one, I think, it'd be healthy, just for raising awareness of students. Purpose and the cause, you know, the effect.
All right, so.
So you had a motion.
I'll be a bit more explicit this time around. Do we have a motion to approve the, the elementary, middle school, and high school handbooks as presented to us, except for amended, Jess Riley, to under student attire, middle school and high school handbook to delete, whenever we use excessively, item number three, excessively revealing clothing, exposed undergarments, bare midriff, short skirts that are excessively short, tight shirts that are excessively short. So moved, second, Jess, all in favor?
Hi.
Next item is each year you appoint me to both the tech and the except board of directors. Sometimes we do it later in the fall, but we thought we'd try to check that off the list as soon as we can and get it over. We're probably one of the last ones to get it over every year, so Andrea wanted that on there, so she doesn't get the on-the-phone call. Where's, where's the school committee vote? So I asked that you appoint me to those, so I could serve on both those boards again.
So moved, second. Yeah, we're not, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Great. Town of Medfield, representative to Tri-Valley.
Right, and your materials, you have an email that town administrator Christine Truwallo sent us. I think Jess and B, as well as Mr. Irby and Mr. McDermott. They have, the email reads, they solicited interest for Tri-County School Committee representative, representative from Medfield. To date, we have received one application from Mr. Jack Rose. Jack is very interested in the position and currently works as a part-time inspector in the building department. The appointment requires a joint vote of the chair of the school committee, of the school committee, chair of the board of selectmen, and the town moderator, hoping the school committee can review and authorize you just to meet the board of selectmen on the 30th of August, and the appointment can be made at the next meeting. So attached is his resume and information.
I think the, the email came through, but I have the original.
Yeah, his letter.
It should be his letter. Yeah, so it's just a letter.
So I think, hallelujah, he wants to do it.
It's one of the first times, and we haven't had representatives for a couple of years, and I think that that's real.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wonderful, we love to serve, and he's got a connection.
They've got a great program there, too.
We do. I was out there last, last spring, because Adam was considering to go. And I, you know, I would have been very happy for him to go, I think his priorities changed, but it was a great school.
Yeah, I actually.
I would like to see us have some more engagement, and I think it's a great opportunity for.
Especially if a building project's coming.
And they have a building project, which would be wonderful.
Yes, absolutely, because.
Yeah, it's not a cheap building project.
They have an intern there studying biomedical, went on to WPI afterwards, very well. Yes.
Do we have a second?
We do.
Just a second. Jeff Rose.
So I think to have the committee approve.
Prove it and pass it on to the board of selectmen.
Well, and also I think the way of the letter reads is that. The chair, the board of selectmen and the moderator have to get together to vote. At the meeting specifically.
I think the vote is authorized and a day.
Yeah, the vote is to authorize you, sorry.
I need to authorize anime of shape to attend the meeting. To. The Jack.
Yes.
Will be representation of Tri Counties, Tri County School Committee representing that.
Okay.
It's a motion.
Yeah, so move, are you six?
All, no, I didn't say, uh, all in favor? No, wait, that's not me anymore. This is how this happens for the first like meeting.
P O. Made the motion, Tim seconded it, all in favor?
All right.
Next one, discussion of potential changes to the regular meeting guidelines.
I think, uh, I had put that on the agenda. I think I'd like to actually take that to a time or put on it to perhaps the next meeting, we could do that. Just because I think the agenda is. Act, we have a lot to do with the draft and I think it's worthy of a, a discussion. Place my policy. Choose one.
Any other items as posting? Business. New elementary school project, so. Follow-up discussion on our elementary school project proposal to the board of selection. We have our draft, we have our workshop and.
We need to continue to flesh out the draft, we want to. I'm going to refer to excuse myself, but I do have some.
Let's have a discussion. So here.
A whole thing.
All right, in essence, we, we struck. We strongly believe that it is in the best interest of our community and our students to examine the current grade structure. Of our three elementary schools and instead. I still believe we strongly believe that it is in the best interest of the community and students for the school committee and the school building committee. To examine the grade structure of our elementary schools. That was Michelle's suggestion so that we are, it is more explicit.
This will be done to the feasibility process.
That's a good question. So is that, I think the conversation the other day was, is something that will happen outside of the S P C as the committee and the administration and staff do that? Or is it something the S P C does? That's where we're kind of.
Yeah, I mean, and that's not, to my point forward, I think, you know, one of the items that I. Thought would be important in this process, you know, if we're going to go back to this, I really feel like, I know the monies have been allocated. For this process, but a townwide feasibility study. Should probably be. That would look at all the structural pieces around shifting, whether it's. I don't think we'll, it'd be too much to be heavily focused on the schools where D P W and Safety Center have been completed, you know. That makes sense, but. I just think a, a strategic look at. At the, that structure, I think will be beneficial for us. And that way you're not just planning on one school, you're planning on what's, is we done to all schools, whether it's. This, you know, whatever main things have to be done to this building, like we lock Memorial. Uh, in particular, you know, within that's, and I think it's kind of encompassed in the conversation here when I talk about early childhood. If that you're, if planning is further down, you have the future flexibility. So. So that, that in particular, I think it's, you know, it's just one of the questions about the execution of that particular. Piece, cause I think that has a chain reaction to not just this building, but how the other buildings can handle the same things. Cause perhaps it's not a building project, although M S B A would be focusing on that building. With, without M S B A, it could be that multiple building renovations.
Yeah, and that's what we discussed and that's what Michelle's suggestion was to put.
It might have. Was it an and with the support of the school building committee? Cause it's kind of, um. I, I actually can see the pros and cons, right? Putting it in scope of the school building committee might be worthwhile. There, there's other factors that are not, you know, necessarily driven by the educational plan. As to why you would want their support. But around the educational plan, I think that would be, you know, I would think it would be. Support, may, maybe this is semantics, cause it should happen anyway.
Well, I guess.
I just see and says there's joint responsibility.
And I guess what I mean by that study is the feasibility should fit not just the own one building, right? So the. Where, where it's more of a K to twelve focus as opposed to.
Just. And this, this amendment is the school committee and the school building committee to examine the grade structure. Of our elementary school, like I, I think that's. I don't, I guess, is there any risk to saying the school committee and the school building committee examine the structure?
If you get the joint effort. I mean, that's apparently what would happen, because of the representation. Whether the study, whether there's a study, if you will. Outside of the building process. Requires another, requires another initiative, I would, I would think that aligning it with this initiative is perfectly acceptable.
What if, uh, and tell me if I've missed this already, what if after. Wrote, or after the Medfield School Committee submits this application for the construction of a new elementary school. For the renovation addition to the Dale Street School or other current elementary buildings as identified by the S P C? Would that help? With that?
I like that.
I can, and in fact, I can add that on to Andrea, just sweating bullets back there. Where the, the sentence would be. In accordance with the newly amended, da, 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 da. The Medfield School Committee submits this application for the construction of a new elementary school. For the renovation addition to the Dale Street School or other elementary buildings as identified by the S P C. Dr. Mars, does that work within your operational and educational goals? Okay. All right. And then, uh, we strongly believe this is in the best interest of the community, students, school committee and the school building committee to be examined. We're going to just take that out. I have to look at the plot, okay.
We trying to get this resolved.
Yes, I think we should, yes, I would very much like to get this on the road.
We committed to submit this at the August thirtieth select meeting. So we can get the motion, you know, the.
I would like to get the show on the road.
Can you read Jess here revision one more time? Cause then you said maybe you strike the last sentence.
Yeah, and so everybody else who's listening to this, because I've. We'll go starting from the Medfield School Committee submits this application for the construction of a new elementary school or the renovation slash addition to the Dale Street School. Or other elementary buildings as identified by the S P C. We strongly believe it is in the best interest of the community and students for the school committee and school building committee. To examine the grade structure of our elementary schools and then we went off period, put period in there. Does that, am I saying the same thing at the same time, or is it a logical follow up? I'm, I'm just listening to myself read it, not necessarily.
To me, it sounded redundant, but I'm.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But.
Um.
Folks think. I liked your amendment.
Yeah. Well. I, actually it's not redundant because we're talking about what we'd like to see and then why we might want to see that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great, thanks, just give me a minute and then period.
And second paragraph there, I didn't, we did not make any changes to the first.
That's correct.
So the first draft.
Shall we read it out just so that people know?
Okay, sure. The previous school building committee spent several years collaborating with the Massachusetts School Building Authority and S B A. On a comprehensive feasibility study as well as schematic design for the new elementary school. While the project as proposed failed at special town meeting by, by four percent margin. There are aspects of the vision that continue to be valid and important in consideration of our community's future needs. Then we moved future flexibility up in the bullets. Project must provide the district with future flexibility for grade level configurations. This flexibility has become increasingly critical both in our present circumstances. And as that mandates for early childhood education becomes a reality in future years. Medfield Public Schools must have the space and resources to accommodate the cyclical one or two grade surges of experiences regularly. An example of which may be seen in our current pre-K and early elementary programs. The district has had to regularly make sacrifices in both community desired and revenue generating program offerings as well as class size. Any new project must take into account how these factors at the earliest stages of education will impact the elementary school as a whole.
Why don't we strike elementary, will impact the system as well?
Okay. Everyone else pull with that?
Yep.
And then what was added is the school committee has taken into consideration the future population increases. Due to other building projects in the town.
Can I, can I, sorry.
No, please.
Okay, the school committee has taken into consideration potential population increases, uh, near term increases. Wait, it's in here. The school committee has taken into consideration. Potential. Increases. Due to other residential or due to near term residential projects in the town, what are we getting?
Want to keep population. I guess you could add to other residential building products in town. Just adding residential.
I mean, I, I just wanted to put residential building, right? You know, that there are near term issues that we have identified. We don't know whether that's going to happen in the future. But right now, what we're looking at right now is specific to what's happening with the population we have. And then.
Okay.
No, I don't have another thing, actually, I'm going to add that to a different paragraph, okay?
No, no, that's cool, but can you reread it?
I can try.
Please.
I'm making it up. The school committee has taken into consideration. Potential. Near term residential or, uh. Wanna say potential or.
Potential population, I think you should use the term population.
Yes.
Potential population. Increases. Enrollment, okay, potential enrollment increases. Due to. Residential building projects in town. Do you want to put near term in that, let's put it in. Yeah. Okay.
I'm confused why you say has taken into consideration.
Uh, because we're just playing with the.
But when did we, did, it doesn't. Like it's, it's either saying. Going forward, we will continue to. Consider populations fluctuation, I almost like the word fluctuations.
I guess.
Cause it is neutral, you just never know. Fluctuations.
Yeah, strike has taken, takes.
Right, takes, was.
Defer to Jess. I just thought that has meaning it's already occurred.
Yes, this. No, I didn't, I know, I think that that's just when we, we came up with last time as a.
You want to sit over there?
And then I'm just staying on tech and then.
I honestly, you know, I wrote this down.
I don't think it has to read increases, cause there is fluctuations. Bringing the community and the group together, you just never know.
I addressed that.
You already had it.
Later.
Right.
No, you're right.
I was just calling out one word, increases versus fluctuations.
Potential, cause we're not saying it will, but there is a potential.
That's why I was just saying fluctuations.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Which actually is part of that.
Yeah.
Flexibility.
This is also a prime example, like rarely do committees wordsmith in the middle of a meeting, but it's, it's so.
We have to vote, but it's.
But it's also, it's just important. Okay, so the sentence would read, somebody jump it, the school committee takes into consideration potential. Population fluctuations.
I thought potential enrollment.
Enrollment, thank you. Is this my first duty as reporting secretary? Potential enrollment. Fluctuations.
Yeah.
Due to. Uh, near term residential building projects.
Or building projects, you ever did near term, did we need that?
I think that what we're looking at is, and we don't know what's coming down, like we do happen to know though, what we have.
Okay.
On our plate right now, does that make sense?
Sure.
So we're looking at that in terms of, in terms of population projections, in terms of now that we know what's happening at the hospital, we.
Yeah.
Anything else, we're able to take those into account.
Beautiful. Everybody happy with that? Yeah, okay, great. Um, second bullet. Change here, good. In, I mean, in our reevaluation of the initial plan. As well as factors raised since that plan was proposed, the committee and administration have identified a unified setting. Of at least two elementary schools as the highest priority of a new elementary school. Or renovation addition project, a unified setting or reconfigure, reconfiguration that minimizes transitions for our students. And increases opportunities for staffs, staff and service collaboration.
I think the word that should be put out of that last sentence.
Yeah.
Unit, unified setting or reconfiguration minimizes transition.
In the first sentence, I would take out have identified and simply put in committee and administration identify. A unified setting of at least two elementary schools as the highest priority of a new elementary school or renovation addition project.
Have identified, have it just identify.
Yes. Um, and then I don't know if we necessarily want this, this in at the end of that particular. Of that particular bullet point, which would be, the committee also acknowledges that within the life of the building. There may be contractions. Uh, of the school age population allowing the district to further consolidate its resources into two buildings. So that we're also acknowledging that not only can we increase, but there is a long-term ability to see a more modern building that's able. To allow us to go for fifty years, the life of the building. And, you know, as people, some people have said, they don't believe that we're going to get these larger bumps and these smaller bumps. We know that Medfield goes up and down. So at some point in the future, we may need to bring. To, you know, two schools together, bring a grade back in. Let's say that we, we know that, that these are factors we understand. And that, you know, building to the population we have now is not probably the wisest, yeah, way. So I don't know if you would.
What do you guys think?
You like to think about that or if it's not necessary?
Can you state it in like that?
I can't. The committee acknowledges that within the life of the building. There may be a contraction of school age population, allowing the district to further consolidate its resources into two buildings. Into building, yeah. As opposed to having that third. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I would just say elementary structure, so that's a elementary.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, to further consolidate its elementary structure.
I don't, I mean, I don't know if that sounds right, I just think it, think about it in terms of just not just resources, but the elementary grade levels and stuff.
I think I was thinking of mine.
I think that's up here.
Yeah, the, the only thing that, I think this is such an hit, but. A while back, we struck elementary from the system. And then you put bringing element, like it just seemed, I didn't have an issue with elementary in there because we're. because we're talking about, you know, pre-K, eventual pre-Ks with sixth period. So I would just stay consistency with the elementary, that's all.
That's why we have pences.
Next one, I'd like to strike twenty-first century.
Yeah, oh, I, I got all sorts of things to say about twenty-first century.
I was gonna say, please strike twenty-first century.
Sure. So, um, the third bullet is space, and that was in addition to the first draft. Adequate learning space for twenty-first century teaching and learning. Suggest Jones.
Contemporary teaching and learning.
I have a significant inadequacy of the current elementary program across all schools is the lack of non-grade-specific learning spaces and infrastructure. Spaces for hands-on learning and creating increased use of library media resources, language labs, and designated music and arts practice and performance spaces are, and then I ran out, it's, are essentially, at this point, it's not, sorry, we are, it's actually just the norm.
Individualized learning needs.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can't believe I remember that. And so let's put that, spaces for hands-on learning, individualized learning needs. We'll take out creating increased use of library media resources, language labs, and designated music and arts practice and performance spaces are, I'll say the word again, standard. And within most schools of this, within most schools, but within the last twenty-five years? How would we like to put that? That's really, I mean, this is, this is not a novel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Space was one of the.
But how do we wanna end that?
The letter may not be placed for it, let's not characterize, I'll just think it is, to be extremely specific about requirements. So, case in point, you know, adequate special education needs spaces, you know, all the things you mentioned in that list, what does that formula look like to a number of people in the building?
I wouldn't necessarily put that within this letter, because I think what this is, is essentially a structure and a list of what.
Yeah.
But I do think that it is, it should be part of our conversations with the SBC right off the bat, so that we all know what our expectations are and what the understanding is, you know.
Sure.
Ones we handed us.
And SBC does a good job of outlining that, because within the event that we move forward without the SBC, which has been suggested.
No, I'm, I'm not saying MASC, I'm saying SBC. We're, we're handing. And I'm saying MASC wrongly.
Right.
But you're saying SBC. I'm saying that regardless of what happens, the SBC is going to have to, we'll have these conversations with them, whether we're accepted into the MSBA or not.
That's appropriate special needs space in here.
I just put in a.
Individualized learning.
Individualized learning.
Don't forget, we tapped the education plan, which details all of these things.
Right, right, right.
You know, so folks that won't look at that.
But I like how you kind of.
What's my last? My last noun. So we'll go across this. A significant inadequacy of the current elementary program across all schools is the lack of non-grade-specific learning spaces and infrastructure. Spaces for hands-on learning, individualized. I'm sorry, Leo, what did you say?
Individualized learning needs.
Learning needs, yeah. Should we simply say individualized and special education or supportive learning?
Yeah. I think, I think it's more direction.
Instruction. And support. Instruction for spent for increased use of library media resources, language labs, and designated music and arts practice and performance spaces are standard within a modern educational facility. I mean, I think that's pretty much baseline. Anything that's been built in the last twenty years in a community is required in some ways to have some of these extra spaces, but also some of these spaces are just seems necessary.
Yeah.
And it's one of the things that we're desperately missing.
We're actively on code that.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Jess. That's great. Next bullet is our school serve as a community resource for many townwide organizations, a new elementary school or a renovation addition must serve the community outside of the typical school day and calendar. Upgraded facilities will provide more opportunities to Medfield residents and potential revenue stream for the school department. And we would suggest that it's, okay, cool. The last bullet, the fifth one, the next school project should be a model for the town of Medfield's long-term energy and sustainability goals. A sustainable building will teach our students each day about the importance of renewable energy by providing learning opportunities around energy sources and use while increasing our ability to manage long-term climate change and the financial challenges that will.
Can I flip those two points? I honestly think that, particularly coming out of the summer that we have had, I think we are all starting to realize what what the world is going to look like.
Sure.
If we cannot make our children comfortable enough and manage our resources.
Not if they're ranked order, but if you, if you wanna put them in ranked order, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I always think education is the most important, but the, the building is tool, is fascinating and great, but not the most important part of what we have to manage over the next fifteen years.
All right, so the first bullet is the future flexibility, second is the.
Oh, I mean, actually, within that, I don't, I, I don't mind the bullet point being there. I just want to flip
Oh, I'm sorry.
A sustainable teaching, sustainable building will teach our students. I honestly think the biggest part about a sustainable building is increasing our ability to manage long-term climate change and the financial challenges.
Do you wanna flood sentences?
Okay, okay, I understand.
So the first sentence will be the, the sentence that is.
That's sustainable.
Yeah, that's fine. And then the second sentence would simply have.
Those goals.
The goals, but we flip the goals.
Good.
Okay.
And teaching is nice, not sweating in a hundred and three degrees at the top of Dale Street is better.
Yeah. Okay, beautiful. Thanks, Jess. All right. Um, in April of twenty-twenty-two, the Medfield Public Schools, with the Board of Selectment's court submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA for acceptance into its building program. The MSBA process would allow the town of Medfield to receive substantial reimbursement for the project, although the previous project's reimbursement of nineteen million dollars is no longer guaranteed. As of this writing, the MSBA has not contacted the district to inform us of our acceptance into the program in December twenty-twenty-two. The Medfield School Committee anxiously awaits the appointment of the new SBC so that we can once again be on the road to providing our students, staff, and community with a modern learning facility that meets both the specific needs of our town citizens as well as their expectation of the highest quality of education.
We need to capitalize district in the paragraph above that. And then, I think I'd like to.
I think we're adding notes about our committee's school committee's commitment.
Nudal is out loud. Medfield School Committee awaits the appointment of the, how about submits this proposal and awaits the appointment of the new SBC so that maybe they expeditiously provide, work towards providing our students and staff and community the modern, it's something, again, not so much more metaphoric about being on the road, but, you know, that this just needs to happen. Yeah, right, so, uh, do you wanna get a, do you wanna strike anxiously and say, submits? And then, that might actually make it the last sentence. And the statement about the school committee's commitment should perhaps come before that. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Medfield School Committee submits this proposal and to the select board. Select. Probably not. Not saying that in particular. Board of selection to and asks to expedite. I'd like to say something about, uh, we're not passively awaiting the appointment of the new SBC. This is something that we have, uh, say in. And that we would like to expedite this process as quickly as possible. Expedite. And panelman. Anybody wanna help me with this?
So I, I've been watching, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try, so we, and, and asks to expedite this process and then just stay with the, so that we can, I mean, I don't know.
Once again.
The process.
So that we can provide, yeah.
That we can provide, once again, be on the road, provide our students, staff, and community with a modern learning facility.
Medfield School Committee submits this proposal to Board of Selectmen to expedite the appointment of the new SBC so that we can provide our students, staff, and community with a modern learning facility that meets the specific needs of our town citizens and we can get very close as well as their expectation of the highest quality of education. All right, and then we need to do the statement. I need you guys to figure out the statement. So, uh, in, in wanting, whatever it was that we wanted to say at the end there about the school committee's commitment and reinforce the importance of its partnership with school.
But just by, by stating that, uh, sorry, what was your first sentence in the Medfield School Committee?
The Medfield School Committee submits this proposal to the Board of Selectmen to expedite formation of the new SBC. Does that sound right? Okay. So that we can provide our students, staff, and community with a modern learning facility that meets both the specific needs of our town citizens, that meets the specific needs of our town citizens as well as the expectation of the highest quality of education. Does that make sense? And then we can simply say the committee is, I hate to say the committee is committed to the committee.
I, I try something.
Yeah, yeah, go, please. This is not mine. I just happened to, you know, this is, this is what I do.
It could be either the, the school committee looks, you know, looks forward to working in partnership with the school building committee and the town.
Great.
To bring the project forward for a successful.
Beautiful.
And the community.
Yeah, it's, um, it's an interesting, I mean, community is, is fun. Like, I think it's, it's, the, the point I'm suggesting is that we want the voters.
The town, you know, that's why I'm saying the community, because the town might make it sound like, because we, we usually refer to the town as town of attrition. That's what I'm saying to community.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a tricky one, because it, there is, the community is key, no matter what. Could be the voters.
Well, how about?
Right, but I think.
It's not just the voters. I mean, that's why it's a whole.
Yeah. All right.
And catch up, so you, you should, you'll kind of.
And I think we can vote on it.
We should. Andrea, do you have enough of that that we could read most of it?
The last one. Most of it, but the, the third bullet. Jess, I got that.
Yeah, that's just swapping the two sentences.
Like the one with the space.
The space one.
The space, I mean.
Oh, the space one she has.
I got that.
Yeah, and the closing one I don't, I have to. But we've been reading each paragraph, so I think if we read the last paragraph, I don't think we need to start again.
Yeah, let's just read the last paragraph.
So Tim or Jess, can please read that last, the last two paragraphs.
Tim, you got that?
I don't have the last two.
Okay.
Well.
You just made up the last two.
No. You made it the last one, yeah. No, I think we get the last, just the last one.
Yeah, just the last one, sorry, Tim.
I just said, the school committee looks forward to working in partnership with the school building committee and the community to bring a project to the town for a successful vote.
Not community.
No, I said community.
Okay.
And the community bring a project. At the end of the discussion.
PC attached educational plan as well as the most recent SOI submission, the Medfield School Committee, and all their signatures. I think that looks good.
Okay.
Are we gonna take any?
So will you, if, once it's revised, will you folks send it to Christine? If you want me to send it to Christine, I think we'll, after.
I think that it should through the superintendent's office. I mean, first of all, that's what I think, so. So I'll work on revising it. Andrea tomorrow is.
Okay. Christine, and she'll, I believe that they've already talked about, talked about.
Yeah, yeah, I asked her to.
I'm gonna allow any public input at this time.
Hi folks, Jerry Potts of Kirk Street. First of all, I am excited and on the agenda is moving ahead with school project. Tim, when you were running, we had brought the, some, we chatted. And getting to a two-thirds vote on this project, I, it has to happen. If there is a two-thirds vote in this town to support a school project. That's the good news. The bad news is it's ten months after the vote and the first workshop on it was held when people are on vacation where there is almost no public communication. So the workshop last week, there were no emails that went out to people. And then tonight, we're having this meeting, and I'm not saying don't vote on it, but I'm saying as a school committee, if the goal is to engage and include the town and the community, which I think is critical, this was not the way to do it. This could have been done in May after the vote. Guys pushed to try to get the school committee moving on this in December of last year. And we're sitting here now, August, where there are eight people in town, and most of them are in this room. And we're taking something that's very critical and trying to initiate it. And I think the messaging and how the message is delivered matters when there was a feeling that there was a lack of transparency the first time around. The second thing is that while this seems like a new document, almost every argument that was used here, literally, it feels like an echo chamber. This feels exactly everything that was said about population and enrollment and everything else. There's been no additional data to support any of the assertion that enrollment is going to surge. In fact, just the opposite. So I, I just would encourage that there's, in, in listening to virtually every meeting from the school committee to the school building committee on what happened on this vote, there still seems to be this view that it was a few disgruntled people. I still hear it's one percent. It wasn't one percent. It was a fifty-one point eight versus forty-eight point two. It was almost two percent of the town, not one percent, voted the project down. And that fifty-two percent still hasn't had the opportunity to have a respectful, open discussion to share why this happened. I've heard from Jess and others that you've talked to people. It's an echo chamber. You're talking to the same people. So if we're gonna be serious about trying to get to a two-thirds vote, please engage openly, respectfully, and listen to the arguments that were compelling, that drove fifty-two percent of the people to vote against, because we can't risk it again. It's gonna take more than what I'm seeing here to start from the beginning to have an open, honest, transparent dialogue. Publishing documents in advance so people can see them. Putting them on the website, clear notification to the public. These are things we would love to see.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Okay, thank you, Jerry. So.
So then, do we want to?
Yeah.
I think we do want to vote, but I think just to, I think more conversations will happen. This is our school committee application to submit.
And I think that we said.
And I think we want to make every effort. To, to engage people. So. I don't see this as the same thing again, but.
No.
I think this is a great start and I think we, we have every intention to, to move forward openly and engage the community.
And again, this is an educational plan. You know, our needs have not necessarily changed. And I think that would be very clear.
Yes.
That we see. You know. Long term, and I, and I think we said it within the document. We see, or see over time, this kind of continuing cycle of having large classes that then contract and expand. And that this happens at the earliest level of elementary education, because we have space issues. Because we aren't able to have as many children in the building as we need to. And over time, this affects our system and it affects it right now. In time, over the life of the building in 50 years, it may be a very different. Issue. We may have people moving out of town. Okay, these are the trends.
These are all those.
We need to be able to have flexibility to work for their, our community investment.
This is the first step we're taking.
And this is a educational plan, not something that is about. How. You know, when, when the SBC is formed and we bring more of the community in to the many, many, many parts of this moving decision. That will be very important. Right now, this is educational based on expertise. And on data that we continue to have, whether the last vote failed or not. And I don't think we said 1%, we said four within this document.
One day, one was at all town meeting and one was the vote.
Yeah. It's a.
It doesn't matter.
But the fact of the matter is that we're just at the point.
The problem.
I feel very good about this.
The fails to problems remain the same today. And it's going to be a problem whether this project happens or not, you know. And I happen to feel like that money had a lot to do with the failure of the vote. And I don't, that is definitely not going to get me better. So I am without MSBA support, dubious that we could get a pass vote in this town without MSBA support. So we all know that that process is going to take time. So as much as I know that we need to go through this process, I think we need to, you know, put it to the SBC. Let the SBC move this ball forward, you know, as we go through this application process. We're seeing, you know, lots of increases in building construction. The numbers are going to come back on this much higher than we, that we put forward. What we saw happening at, just as we're opening up the Sharon High School this year, right now it's being opened this week. Into a classroom, but it didn't go without increases, that talent and what we're seeing happen at the Tisbury project on the vineyard.
And I know that.
Disastrous. So there's a lot of, you know, things that I am worried about when it comes to this. You know, yes, the process is one thing. Financial impact was always a concern. And I, you know, I feel like that it will continue to be a concern. Looks here, so I'd like to get this, you know, get this process rolling. Just like get this process rolling and go back to addressing the more immediate needs like class sizes, which are peaking very high right now, because we're at capacity at two, too much of the elementary buildings. Without shrinking. Yeah, population.
I just, I would close just.
Sorry.
Cause we didn't. See, I think the Board of Selectment is empowering the SBC.
Yep.
To drive this process. I, I actually was, thought it was really important with the closing remarks. The school committee looks forward in partnering with that SBC. And we need to move to getting it formed.
Yeah.
Getting that group formed. That's step one. This, this is what is important, priorities are from an educational perspective. And. I think we will always the balance of right first, rush second. But there is an element of, we have to get moving. Somebody said earlier, 10 months, it's been, we need, we need this application.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve this letter as amended this evening for the new elementary school application? To present to the.
Salute. Second.
Bye tonight. Graham, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Great.
Andrea, I'll be in it tomorrow anyway, so I'll be in it in the morning.
Thank you, Jess. All right, so. So, um. Discussion, the letter, guidelines for recruitment and selection of school building committee membership. And I will provide all this item. So, first of all, I was very excited to see Scott McDermott's letter to the editor in the. Old Town Weekly, and I see it's on the town website. So I think it's fantastic that he is hosting a series of token forums. The next few Wednesday nights, I encourage citizens to attend. So as for the school committee, so once, we are hoping, anticipating that this application will be approved at the August 30th. Board of selection meeting. And that should, in theory, trigger us. To really start to collect applications. And, but I'm hoping we have not collectively discussed, and I will reach out to Gus in terms of timelines, deadlines, because I think we should all link up. I did speak to Christine about hosting whatever application process we have on the town website. And we'll reuse our resources for that, for the school committee to form our committee of four. And, but I would like to align with the timelines for the Board of Selectment and Scott. I don't believe Scott has a deadline for his application process, but I'd like to go to, to one of those meetings. Reach out to them and hopefully, once this is approved, we can have people form, send it out, advertise, and we can get going. That's up there.
Sounds fair. I think that we need to talk about, a little bit about. And maybe this is a little bit before. Well, of course, before the part. But given that there are three very specific populations that will be recruited. And that we, you know, obviously two of our representatives must be members of the school. School committee. And then we have two other. Two other slots, essentially. And I know that we have talked about how much we would really like to be able to know that there's a balance within the committee. So that there are all possible boxes checked. Do we have? Thoughts and kind of general criteria at this point about what kind of citizen we would most prefer? It doesn't have to be written in stone, but what qualities we would most like to see as somebody who would be able to best represent the children and the community that's. Of Metfield. Do we have any thoughts on that? I, I don't know that I do at this point, because I simply don't know.
I think what thought I do have is somebody going into this with an, essentially an open mind, open heart and, and agreeing to work with the entire committee. So not so much a prescribed, this is very hard, we've come off this, but I think we've all learned that we really need to take a fresh look at this, so.
Talking about, and, and I'm specifically talking about the, the community itself, right?
Yeah.
While we're talking about this, yeah.
Yeah, so for example.
I don't know how we data.
Yes, but you know, thinking about. A Google form, you know, all the, the specs needed, name, you know, what happened. But then we get into, you know, what skills do you possess that would, that you think will help you serve on this committee? And leave it open ended, you know, what professional experience do you have? What skill sets, you know? And, and I think we can, having a formal application process, we can go through, go through that. And, and figure out the balance of, of two school committee members. We're going to have to discuss perhaps in the next meeting, you know. What's that going to look like and, and really how to, how to balance all that.
Um, I have one question, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, is there potential for someone to apply for a school committee appointment? Board of selection appointment? And moderator.
That's actually the thing that I was going to ask, because I'm, I'm a little concerned about that, right? But first of all, it narrows your, your pool. And second of all, it kind of makes, we certainly should at least have a disclosure around that. Because I do think that while we're kind of putting our folks out there, I don't know necessarily how other. Membership, you know, people who gather another membership will be able to do that. And certainly there's some very specific skills and professions that need to be fulfilled through the moderators. Because slots and the selections slots.
Yeah.
But I would also want to know that there was somebody there who felt as though their experience is very much weighed toward. The experiences that school aged children and.
So what of that is prescribed in the bylaw?
Well, one thing is prescribed in that it's, if possible, somebody with educational experience. And Ms. Casey herself said that she inserted that simply because she thought there should be education, but it wasn't. But she wanted to be flexible about that. So she did not say that you need an MED, you didn't need a BA in education, you didn't even need a teacher. So there are many things to meet educational experience.
There's a lot of things that, you know, that people are up against. So there's a huge time commitment to, you know, there. And as much as we would love to have, like. Young parent who maybe has some educational background or not, right? But just a parent that has an expectation for their children about to go through the schools, right?
Somebody who wants to do more.
Yeah, that they're willing, maybe has some background that's relevant, maybe it's building background or some. Something along those lines. I think there would be some benefit there. Again, I still think that the commitment level is going to be one of the biggest hurdles. And I think that's one of the things that needs to be communicated to all people, because the worst thing that could happen. Is that the person just can't take it on, right?
And much like the last process for you and me. Dr. Mars, I'm wrong. It was four years of your life.
Quantified with the hours, expectations on, you know. As far as like the number of meetings, how long they are.
Review, I guess, I'm.
Yeah, we should probably go into that.
Right.
So just to be fair, your, your point is somewhere.
Right.
Way to track.
Yeah, and it ebbs and flows too, depending on the time of year, et cetera.
Right. But just the consistency part of things, it's, it's, you know, we were very lucky, we had a lot of. Last committee, we had a lot of professionals in the space, work at that space. You know, I think that. You know, and it was, it was a good attendance, you know, track record, people were there, like, you know, participated. Did the homework that they were supposed to do.
And if we're going to go without MSBA, we're willing to have folks that, that know.
Know how to do.
Cause you're not going to have that, that guidance of the process all the way through. And I think that's one of the things, you know, you and I saw in the last one was having those folks on there that do this for a living was really helpful. So I think if we did.
With, with other MSBA.
Right, right. We did, we said one person on there, that is not bad.
I mean, it's, it's just the. This, you know, value of engineering comes into play very quickly when you don't have guidelines. And I've seen it happen and that's exactly what happened to Sharon High School. So my first year in education, we, we renovated it and guess what? It's being torn down right now. And that wasn't that long ago. So that was $14 million out the door. And now they've had a building alone for 100, whatever it was. So, and that was value engineered, if you will. So, and that's, and that's what can happen and that's just not, on a global extent, that's not going to serve our students.
So we write, submit the letter to the Board of Selectment.
To Christine.
To Christine, excuse me. And then I will reach out about. To Gus and Scott. Make sure we have commitment disclosure.
I just want to make a comment, but if, I'm not sure if we're saying this is high level what we think the commitment is. Really, that would be consistent with all commitments. With that, like, I don't think it's necessarily, it's not appropriate for us to say the commitment is X hours per week. And Board of Selectmen say it's Y.
Right, yeah.
That should be, if you're.
Those are the sessions we want to add.
Good question.
Just so we're all kind of like, have a description of the role as consistent and then. And like, our questions are the most basic.
I mean, I think that's one of the reasons that we really wanted to be able to have a unified application that I know that the selection and Ms. McDermott are necessarily comfortable with.
I think we need to explore it a little bit.
I think it would be important to explore that a little bit more simply so we are able to tell everybody who's on that committee exactly what everyone else knows. Again, that is transparency. There isn't a separate set of. Criteria, separate set of kind of time commitment, a separate set of expertise.
Yeah.
Even, I do understand, Doug Mars, you're concerned if somebody applied to all three, we have a consistent. Who, which you, which group are you? I don't know if that's good or bad.
Cause I think, you know, eventually create forms, right? And you all have the same goal in mind. But what do you bring to the table initially? I think it's incredibly important in terms of making that.
I guess my point was it, it's the importance to have a conversation with the other boards and stuff, right? Because what if you folks key in on two people in the Board of Selectmen have one of those on their list? You know what I mean? Just, it just could cause issues, so.
Yeah, because of communication.
Yeah, I think it's really important to communicate.
And it could be a good question, you know, a good question for Scott, you know, during this session too, around that. I think one of the things that. You know, one of the things that we got a lot from a couple of members of the community was around the finance part of. Impacts. Keeping that kind of running tally. All front and center, you know, and I think, yeah, you know, and around communication, I think one of the communication items in the SBC, you know, I think maybe. Temperature checks. We had the, we had COVID, right? That was a little unexpected. That didn't help by any stretch.
Yeah, I think those are going to be.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So I will reach out.
And then obviously that will be a discussion within, most likely will come up at the selection meeting in some ways.
On August 30th.
On August 30th, you'll be there. The committee is not there as a, as a group, but we can certainly attend virtually or whatever.
All right, Jessica, guidance?
Sure. Your materials, you have the updated August 15th letter from Secretary Riley. He met with us the week after this and essentially said, what was in place at the end of the school year, that's where you're going to start this school year. So in terms of, there's no more testing, statewide testing, they're not doing that anymore, so we won't be having any of that. No more contact tracing or test and state protocols at school, none of that is, is happening. Universal mask requirements is no longer happening. You know, we were one of the, we, we, we did surveillance testing to the very end. Not everyone did that, but we thought that was an important thing to do and that is now over. What they have done is the state has, due contracts, have purchased, both purchased masks and tests. So we ended up purchasing masks in springtime, so we have a good supply of masks if we need them. We do have a small supply of tests, but we're probably going to have to purchase additional tests to keep on hand so that we can do the antigen test in school if a kid is infected. I could donate the 40 in my closet.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah.
Not a bad idea.
I got a thousand masks, I got.
So they did extend the expiration dates on those for additional six months, so that's, that's going to be held at. So we're looking forward to a, a. Open, opening, not on wood, without, you know, the fanfare we've had the last couple of years. We've still, if folks want to wear, and I'll send something out to the teacher, to the students before school starts, but if, if people still want to wear masks, they, or want to wear masks, it is mask optional, no mandate. But as we saw last year, there was only a small number. But we want to be vigilant because there could be a surge. You know, we've, the commissioner said that he's been talking with some modelers that it looks like there could be another surge, you know, late fall, early winter. So we want to be prepared for that, but certainly we've learned a lot in the last few years and address it differently than we have in the past. Looking forward to that. Kathy Thompson has met with the health department nurse and they're going to look at doing townwide vaccination clinics. So she's going to have, and you know, Kathy did all those last year, I think she did nine or 10 of those last year. And a lot of our nurses volunteered to do that. And a lot of our nurses volunteered to do that. So there, I think a lot of them did that again this year volunteer. But our nurses did an incredible job last year getting our population vaccinated. And we're going to open that up again with the vaccines. So that was good news on the for combo flu one.
I am so mad at myself. I got my booster, my second booster off the day that they announced that you don't need to get that one because they have one coming that's better. Really? Weird. It's all right.
All right.
So maybe change.
Okay, beautiful. And future workshop topic, Tim Knight? So can we have it in everyone to have a workshop sometime in September?
I don't know, my schedule's way up.
When, when would you like to roughly?
No, I think. I think it would be more, most natural, second half of September or even getting. I don't think, I don't think. And I mean, it would be a little more higher levels where we think our prior, you know, top three or four priorities.
So should that be an agenda item or should that be, or do you envision that as a workshop?
I would suggest trying to get a workshop on the calendar for like probably some, not a, not as lengthy. And maybe there's an agenda item that says, what is the?
Yeah, one other thing that I discovered. That comes up a lot in my, my summer, my last three months has been homeschool communications. Just blowing up those critical needs or just more consistency and different strategies around the changing technologies and access. I think I sent you one like about some product that's addressing it certain way, but it's been coming up more and more. And it's more about, you know, it's less about websites or anything else. It's more about, you know, teams of teachers supporting students and that quick adjustment time communication. So it's been coming up a lot, how to structure it, what it does in the culture. That was one thing I was going to bring up.
Yeah, I'd say, I'm thinking it's kind of a continuation of the conversation we had in our last agenda, our last meeting in September. I think there's, there's an element around community and how can we drive better, better engagement and, and, you know, insurance is a two-way street. I also think it's worthwhile to look at operationally, how are we running the meetings? When we look at our agenda, might we refine it? So that it, it, it really is reinforcing the three or four, the, the most important themes that there's, there's consistency. And maybe there's, again, like operationally, can we run it more efficiently? Like, but those were how I'm looking at it. And that's again, fairly consistent with what we were talking about in June as we grow.
And as much as the COVID, you know, brought out participation from a different motivation, perhaps we could find, you know, maybe preemptive ways to have themed nights where we are playing, people can talk about certain subjects, right? I guess I could, you know, like a little bit more, I guess, but with a focus, you know, on something more forward thinking as opposed to putting out a fire. So even though we didn't start the fire. But I will not break into that.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any informational items?
For you folks? I did notice that the ant flow disposal devices are installed in the bathrooms. They're lovely. I almost took a picture for Luis.
Yes, someone did take a picture.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Very, very, very excited.
And Scotland, the entire country now has free products for period products.
Yeah.
Not even just the schools.
I saw that there was new charging stations at the middle school. Middle school, every one, every one, cars, charging stations. And also, we no longer have a metal box.
No, it's still there. Well, the construction isn't because of the supply chain issue. So the, the replacement or the fixing of that room that just, it's there until the end. So, yeah, it's almost done. Once that's scheduled.
Sparkles.
Schedule will be done this week, so we'll see. But the insurance company has provided that for us. And when they come in to inspection, see that all that is complete, then they'll take it away. It's going to be costing, yes.
Very good.
Awesome. The new pillars, I said they will work out.
Yeah.
That'll probably be a topic of conversation.
So it'll be a September meeting, we're going to have all that, all the updates for everything else. I thought I'm just working on it.
Right. So very good. Can we go to the new school here?
Did you notice the, did you notice the construction of all thin pieces of wood that are all wrapped around?
That's how we make, yeah, yeah. It's pretty slick. Yeah. It's like a hoverboard. Yeah.
Do we have a motion torture?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So our meeting is ending at 5:00. Our next meeting is when?
September 15th.
Thank you, Jess.
I believe.
Yes.
I would say September 15th.